Our whole and native land, true patriarch love in all our sons come man. With flowing hearts we see thee wrought, the true Lord strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you. I could have attended, Lindsey, you're good there? Absent with regret?
Make the motion, we accept. Counselor, uh, excuse Counselor Dennis, who'd like to meet your worship. Second.
Moved and seconded? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Approval of agenda, any additions or deletions? We're good? Okay, go ahead, Counselor McLeod. Not sure, can you fix this for me? Six years. Can run a tan, but I can't use a microphone. Okay, so, Counselor McLeod, please.
I want to add an item. It's Valentine's Day, and it's going to be a smile and a tear.
Okay. Yes, so I'm going to put that as thirteen A. Counselor Hood?
So, I've given notice of motion at a previous meeting regarding, um, motionary, the number two Construction Battalion. I have, um, actually gave it to the... Anyway, I'm ready to proceed with that tonight, and I'd like to be on the move.
Okay, so I'm gonna put notice of motion thirteen B.
Re-African Heritage Month.
We've got that, okay. Can I have your light? Anybody else? Okay, a motion to approve the agenda with the changes. Counselor McLeod, Counselor Barry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Approval of minutes, public hearing, January the tenth. Moved and seconded, discussion?
Questions.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Town council, January the tenth. Moved and seconded, discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the whole, January twenty-third. Moved and seconded, discussion?
Questions.
Questions called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. And a town council meeting, January twenty-third, please. Move by Counselor Barry, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. And a committee of the whole, February eleventh.
So?
Moved and seconded?
Questions.
Questions called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. It's all those. Okay, number eight, we have nothing there. Number nine, business arising. A, CD Zone, AM twenty-eighteen oh oh nine, the second reading. CAO?
So, your worship, earlier this evening, we had a public hearing on this matter, so at this time, it'd be appropriate to entertain a motion for a second reading.
Counselor McLeod? Go ahead.
So, I move, I move to amend the private sector to assemble at least two parcels of land, of adjacent land, in the comprehensive development zone in order to plan and develop projects comprehensively using a larger number of permitted uses with approval by the site plan approval process. Also, to permit development by using the group dwelling approach as well as individual apartment buildings on separate lots, as outlined in our planner Caroline's report.
Moved, seconded by Counselor Cleveland. Any discussion, folks?
Questions?
Good. Questions called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. CD Zone, grants to organizations. CAO?
So, your worship, today was the deadline to receive applications for our grants to organizations. We'll be assembling a list of all of those organizations. We will be posting all of the applications on our, on our website for your review. When we get together for a committee of the whole, the next committee of the whole meeting, I'll be asking you to consider, or to come forward and consider which of those organizations, if any, you would like to have come for you and make a presentation. We'll then, if there are organizations you want to hear from, we'll invite them into a meeting at a date and time of your convenience, and you can hear the presentations, and then we'll set a date for the counselors to make their allocations and submit their, their allocations for consideration.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. Thank you, your worship. I have one comment I'd like to make. Earlier on, when we were, it's been a while now, when we were discussing the way we approach budgeting, I, I had asked for consideration, and I think it went really no further than that, that we divide the grants into two different categories, where we create basically an entertainment budget or a, an event budget, and then another budget for other things. Because to me, I've always had an issue with it, kind of comparing apples to oranges. Funding a, funding CFest as opposed to funding a van, or that kind of thing, if you know what I mean. So, perhaps it's too late for this year, but I would like that to be considered, because to me, it would be a clearer look than, than you're comparing CFest with perhaps, I don't know, the car show or something, as opposed to, with other things that just don't have the relationship to it.
Yeah, the other thing that happens is, I, I think I saw someone come in today with a request to support a hockey team, for example. And they come throughout the year, don't they? Like, they, they come when the time, when the time for the event happens.
Is that a hockey team, is that a hockey tournament that's coming? Maybe provincial championship?
It could have been, but, but...
So, that's what, that speaks to what we, kind of, they were just spoke about.
Exactly, yeah, exactly. They're, they're two different ballgames. Okay, CAO, go ahead.
Your worship, I haven't reviewed the, the applications. As I say, the deadline has just arrived, so Counselor Cleveland's point about dividing the pot, that's something we did discuss, and I know our Director of Finance had some ideas around an events budget that we have that is separate from the grants, that maybe there's some way to incorporate, so it isn't too late to do that. Let's see what's in the, what's in the basket this year, and as, perhaps at the next committee of the whole, we'll be able to have a conversation about that before we get into actually making the allocations.
Good. Are we good? We don't need a motion for that?
Nope, that's just...
You're gonna take care of it. Okay, thank you. All right. Information item, new business. Variance appeal seventeen Hood Crescent. So, I am going to pass it over to the solicitor to explain the process this evening. We've got an audience full of, full of folks, and he'll explain the process, and we'll get moving on that. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, your worship. So, this is a, an appeal from a variance that was granted by a development, by the town development officer. Um, just quickly, the municipal government act allows a development officer to grant a variance for some, um, or for certain things, including the size or requirements relating to yards. So, the development officer is allowed to grant a variance. There's no restriction on how big a variance or how small a develop, uh, development officer can, the variance can be. In this case, the side, or sorry, the front and the rear setback was twenty feet, and there's a variance sought to reduce that to ten feet, which is keeping with the town There's nothing that is in the MGA that would prevent the variance from being granted. There are some criteria, but none apply in this situation, so certainly a variance could have been granted by the development officer. When a variance is appealed, such as this, notices given, and, and there has been people that will wish to be heard tonight, and, and will be given an opportunity to be heard, councils should, should hear the, the appeal, but I guess fresh, in the sense that they're not bound by the decision of the development officer. The council can make any decision that the development officer made, and, and I would just, I guess, point out that the development officer, in fact, made two decisions, one with respect to the rear setback, and one with respect to the front setback, so it would be within councils', uh, prerogative, I guess, to make a decision with the, that, that's different for the front or the back, or, um, obviously them both. I understand that the CAO is going to review the decision or the rationale by the, the town planning office in granting the variance, so you'll, you'll understand why the variance was approved in this situation, and then the appellant's will be given an opportunity to have their say, and then also hear from the property owner, and then it would be appropriate at that time for, for council to, to make a decision. So, I'm here to answer any questions throughout the process.
All right. So, do, who do we hear from first? That's the process that we want to go through? Hmm? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. So, there is a package that, that is online, on our agenda this evening, and there are a number of documents within that package, including the, the appeal itself, but I want to draw your attention to the document dated January twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen, from our development officer, Joanne Earl, and it's the, at the head of the document, it says "Sequence of Events." And so what she outlines in her, in her memo is, is exactly what occurred through her, through her eyes. The application for the variance was received at the office on January the fourteenth, twenty nineteen, from the owners of Seventeen Hood Crescent. So, the, the application was submitted at the request of a potential purchaser of this lot. The development officer, as she says, may grant a variance for certain terms specified in the municipal government act, and the solicitors just spoke to that. In this case, the requested variance is with regard to the size or other requirements relating to yards. Past policy, and I want to make a correction here, this is past practice. We don't have a documented policy on, on the degree to which variances will or will not be granted. It was the case that in the past, as it's outlined in the development officer's report, that the municipal government act used to, used to identify a minor variance as, as fifty percent. And so that, that inter, that standard has been, has carried forward, even though that was amended out of the municipal government act. We still considered a fifty percent variance a minor variance, or a variance that was, that was suitable, or, let's say, acceptable. And over the past seventeen years, the development officer has applied that standard, and she advised me, this is the first, first time where this, this is, where a variance that's been granted has been appealed, and so we have felt that that was an applicable or appropriate standard to, to apply. Though not policy, it is, has been our practice. So, the land use bylaw requires, for this lot, which is a low-density residential R1, allows for one- and two-unit dwellings, as well as semi-detached dwellings as of right. Required setbacks, as the solicitor mentioned, twenty feet in the front and rear yards. Part seven point one-two of the land use bylaw also states that no main building in this residential area shall have a width of less than twenty feet between any two main walls. With a lot depth of only fifty-five feet pursuant to the original subdivision in nineteen seventy-nine by R.C. Dearman, it will be impossible to erect a structure with the required twenty feet rear yard and front yard, and comply with the minimum twenty-foot dimension between main walls. Therefore, if no variance were granted, the lot is, for all intents and purposes, undevelopable. Once it'd been determined that the three criteria of section two thirty-five, three of the MGA were met, approval of the variance was given, and notices were forwarded to all property owners within thirty meters, as per the act. And so, that brings us to the appeal tonight. The only other thing I wanted to mention, uh, with regard to the planning and development office, we did have also a, a letter from our planner, Caroline Robertson, Director of Planning and Development, dated February first, twenty nineteen, and I won't read her, her entire letter to you, but I think it's, it's relevant to kind of understand that we do have policies within our municipal planning strategy that encourage infill. So, on page two of her, of her memo, or her letter, "Council through the municipal planning strategy has a statement of community interest pertaining to infilling in existing residential areas. Through the statement, council highlights the importance of infilling in existing residential areas in order to maximize the use of existing public infrastructure and reduce cost. Council outlines that it is important that new developments respect the architecture of the area and is compatible with adjacent properties. Every new residential development in the town is required to submit a site grading plan to the town engineer. Infilling projects must limit water runoff onto adjacent properties to current, i.e. pre-construction levels." So, I mention that only because the, the, the land use bylaw has to, has to respect the municipal planning strategy, and our development permits respect our, our land use bylaw, and so, um, the planner is recommending or supportive of the development officer's decision with regard to the, to the variance that was approved. So, there is a letter, obviously the appeal letter, with the six appellant's named on it, and as well, there is a response from the property owners, Greg and Caroline Brown, included in your package. So, your worship, that's the information I wish to, to speak to, and it'd be appropriate to hear, as the solicitors mentioned, hear from the appellant's.
So, I have, I have six appellant's here. As, as per the previous meeting, whoever would like to speak, come to the microphone, give us your name and where you live, and we'd love to hear from you. So, I, I'm just gonna read the names, because it's, I, I think it's within the, the thirty meters, so Mr. Mahoney, Mr. Smith, um, Mr. Parker, Mrs. Bain, Ms. Boone, that's what I have, and of course, the Lewises, because I believe that was your letter, Brian. Okay? Right on. Come on up.
Well, thank you very much. I'll now find all my pieces of paper.
Take your time.
Well, thank you. You, you covered the, the letters that we have, we've had going back and forth, and the, and the original, the, the original justification for these meetings. And Carol Robinson's last letter was the answer to our, our letter of, I forget the date right now, but our first letter out contesting the variance, granting of the variance. And in that, in that letter, and that's part of the, your agenda, she did recommend that the, that the, uh, the, I'm sorry. She, she did recommend that the variance be approved. Looking at that letter, in, in there, there was, was some maps of the, of Hood Crescent, and, and one of the complaints in there, and, and sorry, the criticisms in there, that there are other buildings in Hood Crescent that don't apply to any of the codes, and they, they must have had some form of variance earlier on as well. The, the properties of Hood Crescent are all made up, they're various shapes, various shape sizes, and they were all built some thirty years ago. So, with all these buildings put in, and there's a lot of wedge-shaped units in there, you can expect to see some, some differences in, in the measurements of these things. Everybody seemed to live quite well together, and, and, but these, these measurements are not large. They are small, if anything, and people are living with that. One of the, one of the things to look at was on the satellite map that was put out. It sort of shows the, the series of distances on the frontal coverage from, from those units, from the houses. And that's, that's the, on the red line is the front setback. And when you look at it closely, you can see that it goes over several roofs, and when you look at all of these lines right now, you can sort of see that quite a few of the buildings may not meet this, the criteria that's in there. But we measured our house, and from the survey pin to the, to the basement, it was exactly twenty feet, but when you look at the, the photo, the aerial shot, you can sort of see that our, the line goes over the top of our house, that's because of the overhang, it's the, uh, the way the roof was built, and that's the same on several other houses in the area, too. So, we have...
Brian, which one, excuse me, do you, which, which one is, are you speaking of? There's numbers, it says so many feet. Which one are you, which one has the overhang?
Oh, the, the...
It's probably right in front of me.
It's sort of the red line in front, in front of the, in front of the house.
Oh, maybe up here. Okay.
And that sort of goes, that sort of shown around, around the whole area there, so... So, the photographs are very good. We're trying to get some of those, but right now, they, they don't quite show what is being, is being said in this, in the, in the justification. The, the, there are two areas, there are two, one of the statements is that there is, there's another, another building on Hood Crescent, number, number nineteen, which doesn't conform to the, the present, the, the present setbacks, and that's also used to say that is so far out, that this is one of the reasons that they're saying that you can have this application approved. But when you look at that house, you can see that it's a curved, it's a curved line in front of it, and that's obviously wrong, because you, you, there's no curves in the whole area, that's, can you see that on number nineteen Hood Crescent?
It's not part of the subdivision.
That's right.
A lot of it's not part of the subdivision.
Yep.
Nineteen is not part of the subdivision. Twenty-one, twenty-three is duplex, it's not part of the subdivision. Sixty-three is not part of the subdivision, and twenty-four is not part of the subdivision. At least it's not part of the subdivision.
Can you hear him?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis? Okay.
Yeah, and, and that is, that is, when you, when you look at those, the survey lines around those particular buildings, you can see that was obviously built many years ago, and these sort of variances we're looking at in the front are obviously part of that older system that was there, so... But when you do look at the, the various buildings in there, you can sort of see these, the lines, and they're not too, too bad. There's possibly two buildings that you could question the measurements on them, but two out of seventeens, two out of seventeen, you can't really come up and make the conclusion that many other houses are, are not, and do not conform to it. Two out of seventeen are not too bad. And another part of, another part of the justification is, is the, is talking about the municipal, you know, municipal, oh, sorry, the, the MPS, and when we look at that, it's the municipal planning strategy on infilling. The council outlines that it's important that new developments respect the architecture of the area, and, and, my mouth is so dry. And, and they comply with, with the adjacent, adjacent properties. But looking at that, you, you can see that on this, on this dwelling, any dwelling in that area, with a single or double, with a ten-foot setback, wouldn't, it would violate this policy. Anything in that area would, had a ten-foot setback, none of the other buildings have a ten-foot, small's a ten-foot setback. Oh, thank you very much. Straight water? Oh, that's good. Another, another part of our original letter, we talked about the effect, the amount of water that flows down the streets, and, and we were outlining that any additional, any additional water, it's just up to, about up to capacity right now, it's pushed when we have a lot, lot of rain coming down, but there's an, there's, there's water coming in on the property from an adjacent, an adjacent property. Now, item number, item number B, with the development of these areas, that, that developer has to put together a site grading plan, showing with the infilling, the, and the project must limit the water runoff into, into adjacent areas. Now...
Mr. Lewis, when you, when you say the water comes in, is it, are you talking about from behind this piece of property? That's the only place I can see where it would, is that what you mean? From the adjacent property, or...
That is, that is correct. It is, um, a development east of Hood Crescent, where the land was clear-cut, some grading was carried on.
Okay.
And, and when it rains now, we do get a fair amount of water pooling in those areas, and it, it flows through the rock walls on, you know, by property number seventeen, nineteen, and sixteen, and, and it flows through, it fills the ditches up fairly fast, and, and these days, we'll be getting more water than before. That's an area that has to be looked at very carefully. And another item that was being talked about was a sewage backup, and, and again, that, that's got to be very carefully looked at at the same time. So, so, with the poli, with the policy of, of grading the areas and making sure that other water doesn't flow onto this area, that wasn't done. They grade, they cut the trees, they moved out, and left the system as it is, to a point where the people who lived in, in Brown's old house, they, the contractor went to them and demanded that they pay for a ditch to be put by, passed, put in there, that would take water from the adjacent building, adjacent land, and pass it round. So, we didn't follow along with our grading plans in there at all. Also, as we've gone through this exercise, the, one part of the MPS calls for, says that the, a strategy has to be set up with the communication, communications, and get the local people... local people involved in the, in the planning and putting the whole system together. Well, this hasn't been done. When we got the letter that the variance was, had been put forward, we sort of had two weeks to, to complain about this and then start working our way through it. We had no idea, other than the, the ten-foot setback, there was no idea what was going to be put in there, if it was going to be a single, a duplex building, anything like that at all. So, and then you don't have very much time. Once you've got that first step done, you can't find out what could be built in an area like that. So you have to react accordingly, and that's what we've, we've done. People in the area, they are, they just don't want to see a system in there that they, they can't foresee what's going to happen in the, in the future.
What was that last line? What, what's that last thing you said? The folks in the area, the biggest concern? Did you just say the biggest concern? I started to write...
Sorry, of the filling?
About, you said the folks in the area, the concern is they don't want to see, are you saying they don't want something to happen before they know what it looks like? Is that what you're...
Well, yeah, anybody, thinking of the communication plan that you have laid, laid out, you know, to any development, there's no way you can sort of see what people are going to put in, because there's...
That's what I thought you said.
It may not be sold at the time. So you just sort of left there saying, yes, we'll accept a ten-foot setback, but you don't know what that's going to be in, in the future. But not, but not being able to, not sort of having a method set up. Holy cow. The table booth. So not having a method in place where you can talk to the people prior to coming up and saying, yeah, we're going to put a setback in this place, and, and a few people are given the letter, you already, you already say that you're going to have a community get together and then, and everybody can see what's going on. And that wasn't done, and that's done in this case as well.
So I just, I have to, I don't, I'm not trying to keep interrupting you, but...
No, that's fine.
We, we just want to understand as we go. So my question to the CIO perhaps is, is that piece did not happen because the variance was allowable, right? If we were changing something? Okay, go ahead. Just so we understand. Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
So, this, this sort of situation, a single lot, you know, when, when the property owner comes forward and applies for a variance, you know, there is a legislated process we follow in terms of who is notified and the timelines and your right to appeal. There is not a provision on this particular process for community engagement. You know, this is, this could be a single-family dwelling with a, with a small variance that they're looking for. So what they're, the variance process is laid out in legislation on things like if we were rezoning at commercial, or if we were looking at higher-density developments or rezoning it to R2 or something, there would be more engagement. But on, on something like this, it's a, it's, it is a, an administrative process of, they make the application, the criteria is, is looked at. If it fits, it's, it's approved, and you, as an adjacent property owner, are notified, and you have a right to appeal, and it becomes, it comes to council. There is no provision for, if this were, you know, an entire subdivision being developed, or as we talked about earlier tonight, a change in the bylaw that allows additional property rights for developers, there is more, there is more engagement. But this process is, is a little different because it doesn't change, it doesn't require a change in the law, in the bylaw. If that makes any sense to you.
Okay, though, but to, but your, your policy center says that you will be communicating with people prior to putting anything for like the, the, any of the infilling that's going on. And, and you're not, you're not, you're not doing that. Even in this case, you're not doing that.
Yeah.
You, you send letters out to people within a hundred feet, which is great, but the community, which you talk about a community, like Hood Crescent is a community. So they'd all like to know what's going, what's all going to happen. So you've only got...
So we can't know until the application comes in, right?
So, no, that, that's fine. But then you have to be able to come along and say, we're going to go this far, but to go, what's going to be put there? So you have to have, you have to know what's going to go in there. People are going to live there for years and years and years. So they don't want to go and sign a piece of paper and say, you know, whatever you want to do, go ahead and do it.
Right.
That doesn't work.
Right.
So if you want to, you have to come, have another phase of this, where you can come back and say, what if?
Right. So, so we haven't, we haven't contemplated in this process changing the property owner's rights as it relates to the zoning. So it's, it's still an R1 lot, which means it can be, as, as I read earlier, a single, a single-family dwelling, it can be a duplex, or it could be a semi-detached dwellings. Those are the same property rights that anybody else in the subdivision has. That hasn't changed.
No, 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 no. Yeah, and the lot is full, remember? When you look at Hood Crescent...
Yeah.
All the lots are full, and all the buildings look roughly the same. You know, they're, they're single-family, they're, 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 they're single units, and they all have lords in front of them and guards behind, so. So that's what's there right now. It's been there for thirty-odd years.
Right.
So if you're going to make a change, and everybody would like to know a little bit more than is written down here.
Okay.
And, and that's part, I, I read that as part of your overall plan. And the infilling, what are you going to put in there? You know, the, everybody in Hood Crescent has already said, look, we need to know what's going to go in there. We don't have a building that's just sort of jammed in there, and then, then us come back after and say, well, huh, we don't like that, let's move it. So there are steps I think you can go through to, to improve the communication, tell people what's going on. And I, and I know you, there's several steps in there you can't let, sit up there wishy-washy, but you have to do, you have to tell people a little bit more, I think. So once, once you've got, once you've got a building set to go into the system, and you put it out to contract, and there's nothing else anybody can do, it's, that's the end of, that's the end of the story. So the, the reason, the giving this, the approval, that one house, or a few houses on the street didn't meet the frontage measurements, that I don't think is, is enough to push this thing through. And the, and the other sections of, you know, having, you know, having the, an MPS system laid out, that is laid out, but most of those things have not been done yet. You may be working on them, but in this case, they haven't been followed through. So the three things we, we looked at and said, look, this is, we're not following through on, on the, the rules and regulations that were going to be put in there, and we still, we still object to issuing this. And we, we would like to see, we would like to see that, the approval withdrawn from here, from here, so.
Good. Any question, are, are you finished? For now?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. So, no, we're, we're in no rush. We just want to make sure you, you have some time.
No, no, yeah.
If there's any questions from council, you're, we're free to ask while he's here. And if anybody else wants to speak, they can come up and we can ask them questions as well. Go ahead, Councilor.
I had a lengthy discussion with Brian on Monday. Jeff, so this is the first time, you said in seventeen years that this has happened, that somebody's applied for a variance and it's been, been appealed?
Go ahead.
I'm, yes, the Development Officer advised me that in, in her seventeen years, this is the first appeal we've had of this nature, so this is a learning process for all of us tonight. I've been here fifteen years, and I can, I can confirm personally, it's the first time, fifteen.
So, so with, sometimes you might have landowners, there might be more than six, because I know it's a very small area up there on Hood Crescent. So I, I wonder what we're going to take back out of this situation here that we can improve on? Like, I thought maybe if we had, said there's a variance granted, maybe you can invite the landowners in and have a conversation? Because one of the concerns you're talking about is some of the stormwater coming off the back end and what that's going to mean when they put a other building in that lot? Because that's all, we don't tilt it that way. So I just wondered if we're going to learn anything from this process, maybe that we could invite some people in, go over what the variance means, what it, what it, how it affects you? And they're probably more scared of the unknown, what's going in there, than anything else. And, and maybe have the person that's selling the property or putting up a, a house duplex or semi-detached coming in and show their renderings, because I think we have those from what I understand.
I think that's the, that's the first thing I put down, figure out the water and sewer.
Yeah.
Like, those, those are issues that are, that are important. Go ahead, Councilor Hood.
So I know something about subdivision.
You do? Hood Crescent?
I do so. Not named after me, it's named after that guy up there.
S. Clifford?
No, Samuel Campbell.
Samuel, yeah.
And this picture, the aerial photograph, so they say that Brian's house is encroaching on the twenty feet. Brian comes here and tells you that he measures, and it's twenty feet. And I can tell you it's twenty feet from the property bounding on it. And I'll tell you why. Look at the picture. The plane wasn't right overhead when it took the photograph. It's that simple. And, and so therefore, if you look, you can just see it's nipping the tip of his roof, but down at the bottom, it isn't. That's why you've got some of these distortions that he's talking about. Now let's keep going. The house at number nineteen, which goes in like that. We had a town engineer here hired by the Honorable Deceased Bill Mooney. He thought you could put a street in there thirty feet wide instead of fifty. And he approved that lot, nineteen, wasn't part of this subdivision at all. And he approved the duplex. They got built.
That's on a corner.
Lot seventeen is the first lot in the Hood Crescent subdivision on that side of the road. You'll notice that it was never developed. There was a reason for that. It was unsuitable. All you could put on the lot was something the size of a house trailer.
What?
All you could put on the lot and comply with the bylaw was something the shape of a house trailer.
Hmm.
More or less. And maybe the developer looked at going to Jack Drucker, who had bought the land from, well, did he get from you guys? From Councilor McLeod's people, to buy some more land at the back to give enough so he could have a backyard? Because otherwise, if you built according to the bylaw, it's twenty feet back, like the other homes are, you'd only have about a ten-foot backyard. Not a very good lot. It was unsuitable. And so it didn't get developed, because the development was mostly done in late, very late seventies and early eighties, when Mr. Pierre Trudeau was the Prime Minister, and interest rates were like eighteen percent in twenty-four. And it goddamn near broke my back, I'm going to tell you. Because I was the first one in town to develop it. It was tough. And we sold that lot to the Browns for privacy, for a very discounted price. And it's been private and maintained until they moved away, as far as I know. I noticed that in the correspondence, all the councilors but me were named. I have no conflict of interest. I have no financial interest for thirty years in that subdivision. None. None, except a moral obligation to the people to whom I sold lots, with restrictive covenants, by the way, that existed until, probably, two thousand and seven, something like that? And so I'm speaking up just, oh, and as far as the GIS goes, there's lots here, three and five, well, that aren't, those aren't part of the original subdivision. The owners of those lots bought additional property and added them on to them. And it doesn't show up here in the sketch. It kind of distorts the whole thing. Over here, lot number two was not part of the subdivision, and it shows up here as encroaching on the, that land was bought from Doug Stewart. I would have liked to have had it, but I didn't have the money to buy it. I did buy it right away, though, from Doug Stewart for a sewer, to take the sewage out to the street so you could make a sewer around it. But then I was able to buy this house here, the Stanley Long bought, number fifty-five, and redevelop it. It cost me a fortune. And then lop off enough land to make the street come through so to have a crescent. I couldn't have developed it otherwise, because the sewer wouldn't have flown correctly. So that's how we assembled the land and put it together. And we had, for that time, this was the first development in town that took place that wasn't on an existing town street. I had to build the street, I had to put the water and sewer, the hydrants, all nine yards, and give it deed to the town for the street. That's how it was done. I'm proud of what we did, but we were ahead of our time in terms of, you know, the financing and the state of the economy and the country and all that. And so we're proud of what we did there. And I'm not, I'm not, I think the residents have, I, I understand where the residents are coming from here on this, because we conceived that thing to have a consistent frontage around the subdivision, so that each lot, each building in the, in the subdivision was set back at about the same distance, at least the twenty feet. That's what, that's, that's some background on it.
Last, Councilor, what question, what would be the, oh, sorry, Wade.
No, go ahead.
What would be part of what you talked about, the restricted covenants? What would that cover?
I don't know, a lot of things, though. I had restrictive covenants on there. They were fairly strict in terms of what you could do and not do amongst each other, and maintain, you know, so there's obligations amongst all the people and lot holders. But you see those restrictive covenants, I don't know, thirty years or twenty-five?
The radius, not...
How old are they?
Fifteen.
They came from, they ended two thousand and seven, and they ran it from...
So, so you're here tonight. Let me ask you this. Why didn't you copy this letter to me? You did it to the other councilors.
Conflict interest, sorry.
Conflict, okay. I'll ask you a question. You're here.
Wait a minute. We, we just need to have, yeah, we're going to, we're going to have everybody speak. So, so Mr. and Mrs. Brown, you can, you can come up when your, when the time is...
If you'd like.
Yep, thank you. Okay, just, Councilor Hood?
I got nothing. I didn't realize you were here.
No, but we're good.
I have a question for him when he comes up.
Yep, and they, they will. Okay, so anything else? So Wade, did you have a question for Mr. Lewis?
No.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we're good?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for the water. Holy cow.
It's Valentine's Day. It should have been hot chocolate and candy.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, so, so Mr. Lewis, thank you. We, we have five other people who are more than welcome to come speak, and we have the Browns as well, but we'll go through the appellant's first. Would anybody else on this list like to speak? Okay, we're good? All right. He did a good job. Okay, so, all right, so we can invite the Browns then, okay? So, so Mr. and Mrs. Brown, if you would like to speak, you can certainly come forward, one or both of you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Guess I better stand, so I'm, I'm tall enough for the mic. Oh, well, I say small things, nice things come in small packages. They don't always agree. Number, you're right, we want a pri... Number, you're right, we want a privacy cliff, I want to address that first, but we also took it that lots, we've got four lots, three lots, four, six, and eight, and we combined six and eight together to be our prime property, and with the idea that four would be used as a playground and later, it would be sold, it would be an investment, because realizing that we're going to get to the age we are presently at, we're not going to want the land, that amount of land, it's not manageable. So, four was left separate, it was used as a neighborhood playground, and then as an investment for our retirement, so that's really what it has been. Though we thoroughly enjoyed the years there, the neighborhood kids had the greatest time on it. We did at number fifteen have a variance, front and back, we did have a variance. So there is precedent, whether it's one or ten or all sixteen, seventeen, it doesn't matter, there is precedence for a variance because we had it. Royden Pittman, who built our house, informed us that we would need them, and then he got them. So, the view on number fifteen is pretty accurate. The lot right now is not exactly great looking, it's not adding anything to the neighborhood. We knew nothing about the water, there was a water problem originally, yes, definitely, the water cascaded across. So when we built, we put a ditch across the back of the property, and then we had, we had put two pipes, one in the center and one at the lower end, the center pipe one we didn't need, and the water would all go down and come out the lower pipe. When we left, there was no problem. In the center, it's, it's a little bit lower, and sometimes it would come out straight into the ditch, but there was no problem then. So any problem is coming from the development in behind, and clearcutting up on a hill, that is a problem the people behind should definitely be addressing. But whoever builds on our lot also would have to address it. The foundations of the addressing are already in there. So that's about the setbacks, but we certainly do have precedent for it. I've kind of heard, I've, I've been surprised, when we moved to the valley, our daughter said, why don't you get a townhouse, and we said, oh, no. And we went up there and we saw them everywhere, amazing, and really, really nice ones, and the end, we ended up getting one, and we're thoroughly delighted with it. We own, we don't rent, we own, a lot of them in the valley are owned. The people on the other side, the lady is from the valley, but her husband, when he came down here six years ago, was the only master's rated professional golfer in the Atlantic provinces. So, all kinds of people have them there and love them, particularly as you get older, one floor, it, it's fantastic. They are not cheap housing. We paid a hundred and eighty thousand, and now we're, uh, the current assessment is one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred, that's one side. So if you look at housing there that ranges from, twenty-four is assessed at a hundred and seventy-three thousand, twenty is, yeah, twenty is assessed at about a hundred and twenty thousand, you've got a hundred and seventy-three thousand and a hundred and twenty thousand next to each other, older houses, you're gonna put something new in. It's not gonna be a hundred and twenty thousand, it's got to be way more than that. I can give you a look at the drawing of what is proposed. It's very nice looking, it's a duplex, yes. The way it's done in the middle, it doesn't really look like it, but I have to tell you, if you looked at our house, you wouldn't know automatically it was a duplex, because you can do things differently. Ours has the, the two sides, it's a fern green type of building, but our front door and our garage door are bright yellow. The other side has a front door and a garage door that's bright green. If you go to the sides of the building, we have different floor plans inside. On the side, they have one, one, um, window, and it's a small bathroom window. On our side, we come to French doors with a little landing for, just enough room for two chairs and a table, because that's where the window was blows, then we come to a kitchen window. On the back, yes, we both have French doors with a privacy fence in the middle, but they don't abut each other. Because of the difference in floor plan, they have their deck next to the fence. We don't, ours is over on the other side. So any way you look at it, it doesn't look like it's a duplex, just a few little touches like that. On the road up to Avenue High School, there's a whole line of duplexes, but it's not all white doors, they don't have the garages, they don't have as much variation as we have, but what they do have is, they paint their doors different colors, and you look at it, and it, it takes your eye, you really have to study it to say, yes, that is a duplex. Just painting doors, landscaping differently. Our other side, the Godets, have two vehicles, they have a very wide driveway and very little lawn. We only have one vehicle. We have a narrow driveway and it, then it curves out to go to the front of the house. So it doesn't even have to look like a duplex, having heard the prejudice here and having been a, someone who had the prejudice before we got to the valley and learned some different ways of doing things. So I don't think that it would decrease the value. If you put in even ten, even a thousand square feet, and the covenants do say you can't have less than nine hundred, if you take a figure of a hundred and twenty thousand a square foot, a, yeah, a hundred and twenty dollars a square foot, now, is that reasonable? I'm taking that from viewpoint, um, what they estimate to be the square foot cost for a duplex across the street from us, so I'm taking a hundred and twenty thousand. So if I take that, that means one side, to build it costs a hundred and twenty thousand, other side a hundred and twenty thousand, you've just put two hundred and forty thousand dollars on that street. You're talking modern siding, modern looking, standards today are so different from thirty and forty years ago. We built about twenty-eight, twenty-nine years ago, totally different standards today, totally different. So you've got something totally different, you're not going to decrease the value of the property, you're going to increase the value of the houses in the area, because they've got not a lot that is a lot, they've got a nicely landscaped lot. Now, the dimensions on that, I believe, the depth that is wanted is twenty-eight feet, and what we're asking for is to go to thirty-five. And seventy feet wide, and you've got a hundred and thirty feet. Well, if you're looking at architectural, so let's look at the yards. Number nineteen has a yard on the side, it can't have a backyard, you can hardly get between the deck and the stone wall to mow it. So it has a side yard. If you look at number fifteen, it has a side yard, it has a large side yard, because the side yard is lot number eight. So there's a lot, there's a side yard there. A bit more side yard than at the next one down. So you'd be putting a duplex in the middle with side yards, and if you want a deck on one, you can put flagstones on the other, or patio stones, or a slab, presuming if, if you want to put French doors at the side, because obviously you'd want a deck at the side. So it would very much fit in with the single-story dwellings and the side yards that are already in the area, and add value to it. It, it clearly does exist as well in the covenants, it, it does state that it has to be nine hundred square feet, um, and the setbacks are, are there, although those have expired, and under the R1 zoning, we are allowed to have a duplex there. And I, I personally think that's very nice looking. It is a legal agreement, forty-two years ago, that was declared to be a building lot. For thirty-two years, we've paid you taxes and you've taken our taxes.
Thank you.
Well, give 'em back if we can't use it. You know, um, it's been with that understanding that we bought the lot, that it is a proper registered building lot, and I don't think it's right to ju, now just take it and say, hold it. We can't do anything with it, because if we don't get a variance, nothing can be done. You have forever a vacant, decrepit-looking lot, because no vacant lot ever looks good in, in there, and it's not doing anybody any good. It's doing us about a nineteen thousand dollar harm in our retirement plan, because that's what it's assessed at. If we can't use that land, if we don't get this variance, our lot, assessed at nineteen thousand, three hundred dollars, becomes worthless. Nineteen thousand dollars, three hundred dollars out of our retirement plan. And it is a legal agreement, and the town planner does say too, that it would be undevelopable. We simply can't afford to have that happen, we don't think that it is in the advantage of anyone to do that. Construction of duplexes today is not at all what it used to be. This is a picture of the wall that goes between our two houses, okay? There, there were some duplexes that are very cheap, we looked at some in the valley, and there were some where you could hear the person on the other side of the house in the washroom, don't want it. What they did with our house, and they've done with all the houses that they've built since in our development, is the wall between goes in first. Halfway up, it is a solid cement block, they pour cement, and that cement is the absolute width of a cement block. And then right up to the ceiling, it is actual cement blocks built there. The one up above us is a two-story.
One on the floor.
The, the one above us, two stories, and it is cement slab and then block all the way up. Then you pour the slab on the one side, and the slab on the other side, they are not connected. So with this type of construction, this is not a cheap house. I mean, we went from a full house to a duplex, and it cost us more, and it's worth more now. So a duplex is not cheap housing, and I think this one personally looks very nice, the fact that there's a peak in the center, I, I see great possibilities of making that look like two sides that are not the same thing. So I hope that you will grant this variance. We were surprised when it was appealed, because the lot itself, we rode, drove by it today, and it's not great, and it would improve the water in the street. The sewer, that's been a problem from day one, and it's only for the one house. When the new house was built at twenty-four, that didn't change it, because we wondered what would happen. I think the town, twenty years ago, when the problem first started occurring, should've done something then. There's something, maybe it's because it's an older house, one of the first ones there, but it hasn't occurred really at anyplace else. So I don't, I think that's just a quirk, but the water would certainly be addressed in putting a new house in there. So we're asking you to please grant the variance, it's in accordance with the, the covenants that have expired, it's in accordance with the R1 zone for the area, we think it would upgrade the area, uh, please grant it, it, it's a legal agreement. Please honor the legal agreement. If you have any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. Do, does anyone have quite, any questions?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, go ahead, counselor.
Hi.
Hi. Wow, long time no see, not too long, not too long, no.
Been quite a little while.
Can we, can we cut that in half, like the variance?
Please.
You notice how good our grammar is?
Yeah.
And our math skills?
We are impressed.
So, the, what I, the one thing that's on my mind, I had no idea, you showed me the picture of that, are, were the rest of the people who put the appeal in, were they aware that this is what was being built? Because the impression I had is that nobody knew.
No. No, it's not, it's just a one-lot type of deal, so it, it doesn't go through the process like you've said that a development would. In a development, yeah, it all would've come before the town, and everybody would've agreed, but this is just a private sale.
Right.
It happens to be in a subdivision, so, no, there was, there was no.
All right.
But there has been interest over the years with a number of people, but everybody's afraid of the variance.
Right, okay, thank you, that was my only question, actually.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead, counselor.
So Carolyn, I'm not gonna vote on the motion. I'm not in a conflict, I'm absolutely.
It's okay.
But I'm not going to vote on it, I'm gonna remove myself from the table. You've been good at answering questions I had. When I sold the lots, I believe, they were sold, those are two additional lots, there's three lots there.
Yes.
And one, you've had it consolidated with.
Yes, six and eight.
The one on the other side.
Yes.
So that lot could've been developed, but it.
Yes.
And when you bought them from me, you bought them for privacy.
Yes. And to get my husband to come into town, because having had a big property in the country, it was the only way I could get him into town.
I married a boy from Kent, I hear ya.
Oh, yep.
So, I'm gonna leave, uh, your worship, I'm gonna leave the table. I'm not leaving because of conflict, I'm leaving because I don't want that appearance.
The perceived, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we know it's not a conflict.
Counselor Hood? Sorry, I know I'm a little placey.
Can I talk?
No, you're not, you're good.
I'm a little placey, I understand.
No, you're not.
I apologize for what I, my outbursts. Counselor Hood? I apologize for my outbursts, whenever.
You don't need to apologize.
No, no, but I, it's not, it's not for me to, uh.
He's the king of outbursts, he doesn't.
He hasn't learned, has he?
Right.
You want that more now?
It's all right, that's right.
That's just me, like.
Uh, it's, and it's, it's never, it's always out of passion, so it's all good. Thank, thank you, Mrs. Brown. So here's how this for council, this is how this works. We have, we have three choices, we've heard, and, and I just wanna make it clear to everybody here, that, that council has had the package. Um, I know that a couple things, including what Mr., Mr. Lewis addressed, our planner's letter and your response to that, and I want, I want you to be assured that we have that. So we, we've all had this for quite some time, we've read it, I just wanna make sure everybody understands that. So we have three choices, we can approve, we can reject, or we can defer. That's, uh, that's up to council, whatever your wishes are. If, if you, you feel good to approve, having seen everything and heard, reject or defer. Go ahead, deputy.
Listening to, so are you, okay, thank you, your worship. Listening to Mr. Lewis and then listening to Ms. Trask, I'll still call her that from grade, grade ten, yeah.
She was Mrs. Brown for me.
I think, uh, what she showed us tonight, I would've voted against it, but what she showed us tonight, I'd, I'd move it to defer, to address some of the, because what happens? We voted against it, Greg, what's the process after that? You have to apply for a, a variance again, then the same thing would happen all over again.
Yes.
So I'd like to, if we deferred, Jeff, let's see timeline, because I'd like to, like the adjacent landowners to have an opportunity to look at what she presented tonight.
Go ahead, C.A.
And, and also to have staff get involved with some of the issues that they're talking about, the water coming off the top of the hill, um, coming through, coming through the stone wall, and a couple of the other things that they talked about. That's my inclination right now, not to kill it, but to get the neighbors involved, just to talk.
Okay, so the first question, I guess, was, was deferred, how long? You could table it till the next council meeting, uh, you could pick another time, you will be together in two weeks for a committee of the whole, you could, you could plan a special council meeting for that day, since you're all ready together, uh, it's, it's your choice.
Detective Steph, plenty of time to look at the questions that were brought up tonight?
If, if you table it to the next council meeting, I'd feel more comfortable.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm making a motion that we defer this decision to the next council meeting, to have staff, uh, put their input, bring their input into it.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any more discussion, questions?
Question.
I do have one.
Yeah.
Just one thing.
I just wanted to make it clear, clear, and again, he, uh, he pointed it out, uh, deputy, our deputy mayor pointed it out, but if we vote to defer, let's, let's make sure that the people on Hood Crescent are part of this.
Yeah, I think Counsel Barry said, like, how, like, would Brian maybe be the spokesman again? I think those guys have, they had confidence in Mr. Lewis speaking tonight, so maybe Brian and somebody else that he wants to bring in, maybe.
Because it won't be another, it won't be another hearing.
It won't be another session like this, right?
We just may have more questions, uh, making sure we understand the concerns, and, and certainly what I, I mean, the, the photo especially, I mean, aesthetically, it's great, we just wanna make sure of a couple other pieces, and.
Yep.
Yeah.
Your worship.
Go ahead, C.A.
So I just wanna be, uh, clear and hopefully correct, um, and I'll, I'll ask the, the solicitor to correct me if I'm wrong. The application for a variance is not an application for a development permit, okay? It is a, it is a separate application, and it is just about the lot itself. Now, the information that, uh, Mrs. Brown brought forward tonight is, is, it's good information, it's useful, I think it probably, um, made an impression on, on people here tonight, but it is not, what, what, what we are not in the process of doing at this moment is a development permit or a building permit for that particular building, it is simply about the lot dimensions, and it's not about the lot grading even, because that is part of the development permit process, which you can't get to unless you do the variance. So, um, I just wanna be clear that, that I know the intentions are, are, are good, that you want, you know, if something's gonna happen here, you want everyone to be, uh, to live happily ever after, and be, and have their fears, uh, put to rest, and, you know, we have no, no issue at all in sitting down with people and, and talking about what the intentions about what the intentions and the plans are. But I just want you to be clear in terms of your decision that you're being asked to make is, is about the lot dimensions only.
Yeah, the lot separately.
Yep, okay.
Good, anybody else?
No, I have no comment.
Okay. All right, so there's a motion on the floor.
Question, Your Worship.
Questions called. All those in favor?
Aye.